Put them on the phone.
Upgraded to one of them.
I scalded me again. Scalded me again.
It's really all back anyway.
I've got two sport coats and four pair of pants.
Now we gotta buy him a new chair. Look at him.
Someone give me the bum steer.
Hey, I don't want it.
I'd shake her and break her and need to switch. But now that I know what to do then, I'll switch with me.
Hear us talk about it.
Smell like a goat when I get them back.
But yeah, that's nice. I'm glad you went down.
It was good. I mean, it was really nice.
We went to Cozumel.
Did you have three through?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Big tall glass.
Like you guys over on Walker Street, as much equipment as we have run down there. This is equipment in the far, but we appreciate the concrete. But it lasted longer and longer. That alley's nice back here, though. It's a nice big alley back here.
That one has a cook.
I was gonna ask you that. Thank God. Did you hear that? So just by title only, man?
Well, Brittany can read it if you want.
Yeah.
That'll be a mute. Yeah, they're on. You guys aren't saying for that.
Oh, did you? Oh, Saturday night?
Did you really?
You're in pretty good form Friday night.
Really? Why?
I was gonna introduce you to everybody real quick, but we only got like three minutes. I should've done that. I wasn't.
And so driving cab, do you like it?
Well, I'll tell you, it was very interesting.
Yeah?
I picked up one couple.
You've got some real interest in it, don't you?
Picked them up.
Yeah. Say the least. I probably stopped by in the morning, but I won't be able to stay. I gotta go to Christ to get mine.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay.
Um, yeah.
Next Tuesday.
Pretty much be saying.
That's kind of something. Find out when you're. I'm driver.
I'll start then.
Wow.
That sounds good.
Aaron, how you doing, buddy?
How's it going? Yep, same here. Right here. One step in the right direction. All right, it's technical. We have a meeting at five.
It's okay with you. Is that okay?
I'd rather do that.
Go ahead and do your, do you wanna do it first and then have the presentation? And you wanna present and then just let me know?
We'll present it and then we'll pass it.
Awesome. Sounds great.
Yeah, no, not really too much. Not too bad yet.
I had to vote on passing it during this five o'clock session. Since it's public. Knock it out.
Yeah.
That way he doesn't have to stick around if you don't.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. Works out great.
Yeah, I had it on all day until now.
Okay, let's go ahead and start, call to order the special session of the, of work session of Lawrenceburg City Council. Uh, main topic is to talk about invest- investments. Um, I'll turn it over to Clerk Treasurer Tyler Randy.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've worked with Jeff Messer and Umbal for the last couple of months regarding, um, an investment policy for the city of Lawrenceburg. If we do have one, guys, I wasn't able to find it, and it's required by State Board. So it's something that we're gonna implement for the city. Also, we're gonna talk about the investments ordinance tonight and also the resolution. And I'll have Jeff come to the podium and he'll help break this down for us. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Tyler. I'm Jeff Messer. I'm with H.J. Umbal and Associates. And I basically head our investment team for, for our group. I've been working with cities and towns and schools and counties throughout the state of Indiana for the last about 25 years. Twelve of which has been with Umbal and the others with, with, worked with Fifth Third Bank, assisting folks with their investment needs. Uh, and, um, tonight, I know you're gonna have an opportunity to, uh, adopt, uh, several things, a resolution, an ordinance, and along with an ordinance, the investment policy that Tyler mentioned. And Tyler asked me to come up and explain, uh, a little bit of, you know, kind of why you would wanna do this. And, um, first I'll start with the resolution that will be in front of you this evening. The resolution, um, essentially what, what you'll be asked to do is to expand your investment options, not to make it, uh, still, still safe options under the Indiana Public Funds Code. Everything that you, you can do here as a city is, is very conservative with respect to investment. But this just kind of expands your options a bit. And the, the first one is the resolution. So the resolution allows you to do a couple of things. One, it allows you to invest in public fund CDs with banks that are not only within the city's political subdivision, but any bank in the state of Indiana that can take public funds. So while, of course, you always wanna use your local banks for certificates of deposit, you'd like for them to win every bid that you have, what this does is just gives you the opportunity, uh, to bid to other banks, say, all the banks that are in your county, maybe, or all the banks, uh, that are in your, that are in your contiguous counties. So you can add more banks to the, to the competition list. And we found that that really helps folks, uh, to improve their interest earnings. And it may only be a couple of basis points more, or it could be a lot more, depending on what banks have going on. Uh, they, they're in the spread business, so if they've got a big lending program going on, maybe they're really gonna be active in trying to get public fund deposits. So, uh, they might be offering a little higher rate of return for a temporary period. And if you happen to catch them at that time, it's good for the city, 'cause, uh, you're, you're earning some additional interest. And again, it doesn't ever exclude your local banks. They're always involved, but it just gives us the opportunity. If the State Board of Accounts came in and saw that you had a bank that was, you know, a couple of counties over, that was on the list that you owned, they would be asking, hey, where's your resolution that says you guys can do this? So that's, that's what the first part of the resolution does. The second part allows you to invest in what are called CDERS. CDERS stands for Certificate of Deposit Account Registry Service. And that's, uh, really, it's, it's another form of CD, public fund CD, that some banks in the state of Indiana offer. Uh, and the difference, uh, between a public, regular public fund CD and a CEDR CD is that a CEDR CD is fully insured by FDIC by the way it's created and put together. So that if you had a million dollars that you wanted to invest for the city and you bought a CEDR CD, it would be fully insured through FDIC for that, for that $1 million. And, and again, this just expands your investment options. There's, uh, I don't know, 30 or so odd, some odd banks that offer CDERS throughout the state. It's just another option that if you're bidding out CDs, ask a couple of CEDR banks, CEDR banks to see what their rates are doing. And it just, it creates, again, additional kind of competition with the opportunity to earn additional interest.
Now, and just to touch base there, like, compared to a normal CD compared to the CEDR, a normal CD is only FDIC insured up to $250,000, correct?
That is correct. So, so in that million dollar example I gave, if you were to just go, you know, down the street to your local bank to get a normal public fund CD for a million dollars and, uh, you know, you wired them money, that would be insured in two different ways. Uh, you'd still be fully insured. $250,000 of that would be insured by FDIC. The remaining 750 would be insured by the state's Public Deposit Insurance Fund. So the state of Indiana insures every dime of every municipal deposit over and above the FDIC insurance, which is literally billions of dollars. But, and they, so they have a fund set aside to cover any potential claims against that. I'm not sure they've ever had a claim, but the point is, um, that million dollars, um, you can go to sleep at night knowing that you're fully insured either through FDIC or, or by the state of Indiana.
So what's the advantage to do, uh, CEDR's over a normal CD? Is there an advantage?
Well, the advantage, really, there's no advantage. Uh, it's just insured differently. What we're looking for is to add a cou- a couple of banks to the mix that can, we're looking for a higher interest rate.
Options.
It's just another, it's just another option.
All right.
And if you owned a CEDR and you didn't have this resolution passed, the, the State Board of Accounts would probably go, hey, we're, you need to pass a resolution to get it. So, all right. So that's, that's the first thing. Any more questions? Yes.
Do they insure the, just the principal or the interest also?
Um, so the interest, yes, the principal and interest, uh, is, is insured. That's correct. That is a very good question.
Thank you.
You banker, you.
I know. Hey, we've gotta squeeze every penny we can.
Every dime. That's exactly right. All right.
Now, before we move on to the next thing, did anyone else have any questions about this resolution? Anything? Nope?
We'll go through all three items before we ask for votes. If that's okay. Go ahead to the next.
So then, the second would be the ordinance. And the ordinance is kind of done in conjunction with the investment policy, but I'll, I'll talk about the ordinance first. So what the ordinance allows you to do is to invest in securities, whether it's a CD or a treasury security or an agency security, that has a maturity of greater than two years, but not greater than five. So if you went out and bought a three-year treasury security, um, and State Board of Accounts came in and said, hey, so you got a three-year treasury security, where's your ordinance that says you can, you guys can buy something greater than two? If we did nothing, uh, you, the maximum maturity for any investment that the city has would, would be two years. So this just gives you the flexibility to invest out a little bit further. Generally, rates are better the further out you invest. So this gives us the flexibility to do that. In conjunction with the ordinance, what, when they, when they wrote the statute, they said that you had to adopt an investment policy along with that ordinance. So also included in your package should be an investment policy. And this policy, we worked with, with Tyler and Brittany, basically, this, it looks a lot like, um, most of the folks that we work with. It's kind of a standard, uh, investment policy, just very basic. Who's in charge, what, what risks, you know, if you, if you look on page one there, the general objectives are safety, liquidity, and return, as they should always be when you're investing public funds dollars. And then, uh, it describes, essentially, it just, um, talks about what are the eligible investments, which is, uh, it mirrors what the public funds code, what you're allowed to do in the, in the public funds code. The, the, the part that the State Board of Accounts would be interested in is on page three. If you go to page three, at the bottom of the third page there, where it talks about maximum, um, where it says investment parameters, at, on the second paragraph, it says, "The city may adopt an ordinance which is..." This ordinance that's in front of you. And, and it, that, that will allow you to invest greater than two years, but, but not greater than five. And so they'd be, the State Board of Accounts would be looking for that. Oh, yes.
Just curious, what, what is the rationale behind the two years? Do they explain that?
Well, that's the way it's always been set up before, for whatever reason. We were never allowed to invest outside of two years because of this ordinance. But now if we, or, I'm sorry, the policy and the ordinance, but if it's passed, obviously the benefit is we can go up to five years and then we'll get higher rates by doing that.
I understand. I'm just wondering what the rationale was behind the two years in the first place. They, did they?
Only two years?
Yes.
Um, I think if you go across the U.S., you would see that, um, a lot of folks have two-year limitations.
Yeah.
And then, and in order to do more, they want their local boards to know, hey, we're gonna invest out a little bit longer than, than two years. And so there's, uh, you know, a lot of ordinances around the U.S. that are, excuse me, that are being passed, um, that, it just, it's just kind of a communication thing with, with the board. But it seems like two years is the limit, kind of, um, wherever you go, uh, in, unless you, uh, unless you pass a resolution or an ordinance.
I would, I would imagine, you know, most, most communities aren't, I mean, maybe aren't as blessed as a gaming community, not just Lawrenceburg. So, I mean, they need liquidity a little sooner, maybe at times, than putting it out to five years.
That is correct.
Right, I mean.
That is correct.
So that, I guess that would be the rub, the further you go out, the less liquidity you have, 'cause you've, you, it's gotta mature, correct?
That is, the less liquidity you have, you, you, the securities that you would buy, or that you would own, are generally considered liquid securities, but just like anything else, um, if you buy an agency or a treasury, is if, they, they float with the market. So if interest rates go up, the value of that security goes down. So in, I know Tyler wanted to mention, um, you know, just in, in terms of liquidity needs for, for the city, that, that's, that's a key thing when, uh, when a city or a town or school invests money, is what is, what are your liquidity needs? What, what kind of projects do you have? And you guys are unique, obviously, being gaming, on the gaming side. Um, but, uh, it's just knowing what your liquidity needs are very important, um, because the further out you invest, yeah, that is a little, little riskier in the event you need that money early.
Would you be allowed to tie up your city money for the next administration? Know what I'm saying?
Going past the, say, our three years or whatever that's left? That's a good question, Tyler.
I mean, there's nothing in the statute that I'm aware of that, I mean, that would be obviously a policy decision on, on, on your part.
The policy only lasts, the policy we're gonna be asked to pass tonight only lasts four years. It expires in four years. But if we invested in a vehicle that was longer than that, and like Jeff said, they're liquid, so, so we bought, say, in three years, we buy a four-year vehicle, and the next administration could choose to just cash that out right when they take office. So it wouldn't necessarily bind them if they chose not to.
Correct.
Okay. Good question, Paul.
Very good question.
Okay. Did all three, did we?
All three.
All right, uh, I think the, well, according to, if I'm reading the ordinance correctly, that under letter A, I mean, it says you should first adopt the investment policy. So I would entertain a motion to, uh, to approve the investment policy.
Move.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. And then Dell, can you, uh, well, we're gonna do the resolution or ordinance next?
Uh, we can do the resolution, yeah.
Okay.
What's the number?
You know what number is Suzanne, or Tyler? What the resolution number would be?
Um, the resolution number for this one is, should be in that blue, that blue folder. Six.
Okay, thank you. Resolution number six dash 2016, a resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code 51395 and 5139513, where as the city of Lawrenceburg, the city desires pursuant to Indiana Code to allow banks outside the political subdivision to submit quotes on public funds certificates of deposit for the purpose of investing and operating in federal funds and where as the city also desires pursuant to Indiana Code to invest in federally insured certificates of deposit under certain conditions. Now therefore pursuant to Indiana Code, the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg hereby authorize the investing officer of the city to invest in certificates of deposits of depositories that have not been designated by the local board of finance, but have been designated by the state board of finance as a depository for state deposits only in the code. This authorization expires two years after the adoption date. The common council of the city of Lawrenceburg also, also authorizes the investing officer to invest in certificates of deposit under certain conditions in accordance with Indiana Code as follows. Funds are initially invested through a depository that is selected by the investing officer. A selected depository ranges for the deposit of funds and certificates of deposit in one or more federal insured banks or savings and loan associations where they're located for the account of the city. The full amount of principal and annual accrued interest of each certificate deposit are covered by insurance of any federal deposit insurance agency, NLPDF insurance in the state of Indiana. Selected depository acts as a custodian for the city with respects of certificates of deposit issued for its account. At the same time that the city's funds are deposited, then the certificates of deposit are issued, selected depository receives an amount of deposits covered by insurance of any federal deposit insurance agency from customers that or other institutions where they're located, at least equal to the amount of funds invested by the city through the selected depository.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number six dash 2016.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion will carry. And then ordinance number, what's the ordinance number, Tyler?
Uh, 22.
22?
Yes, Your Honor. Ordinance number 22 dash 2016, ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code. Where as the city of Lawrenceburg, the city desires to allow the investment of public funds of the city for more than two years and not more than five years. Now therefore pursuant to Indiana Code, the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg hereby authorize the investing officer to make investments having a stated final maturity that is more than two years, but not more than five years after the date of purchase under following circumstances. The fiscal body of the city shall first adopt an investment policy authorizing the investment of public funds of the city for more than two years and not more than five years in accordance to the code. This ordinance has, and the power to make an investment having a stated final maturity that is more than two years, but not more than five years after the date of purchase expire on the date on which the investment public's policy expires, which may not exceed four years. At the time that an investment of public funds the city has made having a stated final maturity that is more than two years, but not more than five years, the total of such investments of the city may not exceed 25% of the total portfolio of public funds invested by the city, including balances and transaction accounts. An investment officer may contract with a federally regulated investment advisor or other institutional money manager to make such investments.
Okay, I, I just got a, I got a silly question, Tyler, and you, you probably know the answer.
Sure.
I think I know the answer, but.
Sure.
I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Does, I mean, our, our intention is to keep the money local, if we can.
If we can.
Right. And the other thing that, um, I, I just have to ask, is I'm certainly not an investment, investment banker.
Let me go back real quick, though.
Yeah.
The intention is to keep it local, however, if, if, say, if we were to reach out to Umbal for this, and if we give them a portion of our portfolio, they're gonna go, do the bidding process on our behalf as far as reaching out to all these different banks in the state of Indiana. Instead, I mean, and I, and if you guys want, I can personally call all these different banks and get bids. Um, but with their help, that's what we're kinda moving toward.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
But that's, that's just kinda where I'm at.
I just, you know, I just would, you know, if we, like we do anytime with bids, we, we always try to give the locals.
Right.
The, the one up, so to speak.
Right.
And I think that's what your intention is.
Right, no, we are.
Okay, and then I think you answered my second question. Like I said, I'm, I'm certainly not an investment banker. Uh, I wouldn't know if it, it makes sense, I mean, unless I ask somebody where I've got my money invested, you know, tell me, does it make sense to, to go two years or does it make sense to go five, you know, based upon the, you know, and that's, that's the help you're asking for as well, right?
That's the help we're asking for, and, and it's gonna depend on, like Dell was saying, like, how we foresee what we have purchasing in the future as well, as far as like how much money we wanna have tied up and for how long.
Okay.
So that'll all go into that as well. That's why, like, tonight, I just wanted to talk more about the policy and the resolution and everything before we go into the actual numbers.
That clears it up for me, Paul.
Now, I got a question. When we pass these, are we automatically handling the torch to Umbal? Or will he be making a presentation to us in some type of bidding process to handle our money?
That's the route I would like to go.
Because, uh, the one, there's quite a few people that might be interested in handling our money that aren't here or doesn't, I, I mean, are we making a decision tonight passing these ordinances, or will there be more information coming?
It doesn't, it doesn't name anyone.
No.
That's what I, that, okay.
No, we're not naming anyone yet.
Okay, that's fine.
That's a good job. Okay, that's my question. Anybody else have any questions for, go forward with this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, or I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 22 dash 2016.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion to carry. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read the second reading of ordinance number 22 dash 2016 by Title only.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I can't stand this. We gotta change it. Opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, good. Um, please read the ordinance number 22 dash 2016 for the second reading.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 22 dash 2016, ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 22 dash 2016.
Move.
Second?
All seconding.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion will carry. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for the third and final reading of ordinance number 22 dash 2016.
Send move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please read ordinance 22 dash 2016 for the third and final reading.
Yes, Your Honor. Ordinance number 22 dash 2016, ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code.
I'll entertain a motion to accept, uh, ordinance number 22 dash 2016. Randy makes the motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. Tyler, Brittany, Mr. R, please thank you for taking care of this and getting this put together.
Oh, no problem. Thanks, guys.
And is there any guidance, uh, just to piggyback off of the mayor's questions and Paul's, Mr. Seymour's questions? Is there guidance, uh, for the clerk treasurer's office as to how we'd like to proceed next? You know, that, I think that would help.
Um, I think like Paul said, I need to move a lot closer to actually getting the core balances identified, coming up with actual numbers. Um, that's, that's my next step.
Great. And is that what you guys would like to, I can tell you that Tyler, uh, and Suzanne and Brittany have been working really hard on this, and they've been doing a great job identifying what do we need to do. This is, of course, a first step. And what Tyler's talking about is, uh, what's appropriate is to identify what's called a core balance, which is how much money do we absolutely need to keep the city running? Uh, a lot of times that's based on your general fund needs. And we've also been doing work, obviously, with dormant funds to, uh, have our general fund be more of a true fund. We've got a rainy day fund now, a true rainy day fund, a true general fund. And the reason that's important is because those are your core services. That's how you fund that. So we'll know, hey, this is how much a general fund costs every year, so this is how much money we have to have on hand. And then that's our core balance, and we have a liquidity profile. That is what's desirable. So the core balance is what we need. The equity profile is what's desirable. Do you want it to be 15%, 20%, 25% of what we just wanna keep, uh, liquid for projects? And then that's how we determine how much money we want to invest every year, um, which is what, uh, I think an advisor, like Paul said, would, is going to help with, and we got two great ones here in the audience today.
Well, I guess my question is, is, should we have an advisor that is going to be handling it? Because I, I mean, for me sitting on the board and then being over there, I feel like we got a board member that's pretty good on the banking end of it, that kinda watches out for us. But I, I don't mean to do this to insult anybody, but I question all of our intelligence to make the right decision. Is there, is there any reason why we should reach out to form a committee to make sure we're doing the right thing? As far as who we pick and what fees they're gonna be charging and places they're gonna put our money? I mean, I, I'm just asking questions, because I don't know any.
Dell actually emailed me the same exact thing that you just said, as far as maybe forming a committee. And, and I, I just threw this out there, and maybe I'm wrong, but I said, I was confident with the help of Tom Palmer at US Bank, with the help of Jeff at Umbal. If you want us to reach out to some other advisors, I will. If you want to incorporate anyone else.
We've got some people in the banking community that I think might be better suited than I am to make them kind of.
I think so. There's some out there, I think, that we could talk about something like that together here.
That would be very dumb of us to do. I think we should reach out a little bit.
We've got some people on the bond bank committee that are very, probably very capable.
Right.
Might help.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. Tyler, you got anything else?
No, I don't have anything. Do you, Jeff? I don't have anything else.
Like I said, thanks to your office and, and to Jeff for helping with this. And Tom, you've always been a great help for us. I'll entertain a motion. Anybody got anything else for this? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I don't know.
Send move. Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you. Council meeting starting in about a half hour.
Somebody else can do it.
The only thing that's worth running, I'm going to get the packets for.
I can fill the bus.
I can fill the bus for a second.
What'd you do all weekend?
I guess I could go and check on the kids, because he's working.
You practice arguing with Reggie all weekend.
The county's packets in the garage, actually. If you don't want to, you can share mine with me.
Oh, my gosh.
Guys, start sending them texts.
You started the text. I didn't. You sent the text.
I was sitting there with her listening to that.
And then Tony sent the one about the full moon. I thought, well, we'll just start a new moon. Thanks, Suzanne. A little late. I couldn't went over. I was playing, I was going over, but the mayor went over. A little late. I'm going over when the ground broke down.
Of course you can. Of course you can.
I'm gonna leave that shit there.
I'm gonna take some right here. At least I'm not a silver pants.
We're bringing up something that's sort of work.
Johnny, how you doing?
I'm good.
You going to present that?
Yep.
Icicle lease.
Icicle lease, yeah.
For a dollar.
Quarter of a solar park.
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, you got a big one out there.
Uh, something else.
Take all them lights down in the park and put solar on there.
What'd you say, bud?
Solar. Doing solar here. Solar stuff, yeah? And I told him, I said, make that park up around there a solar park.
Solar park.
Solar. Solar. Solar park. And that gets finally up there.
I've heard of you, put those solar panels up there.
That looks finally up there.
Take a look at that. That's from the losing.
Yep.
So they make those.
I went to.
Off that contract, they dropped it off.
Probably four or five months a year.
I was going to tell everybody something if they're off, I don't want to say it.
Tyler, we can't talk it off. Everybody's quiet.
So you've been practicing, huh?
Mayor?
Yes.
Turn the mics off.
You want them off?